Good evening. Today is Tuesday, December 13th. The time is just after 6:15. Welcome to the Athletics, Arts, Music and Extracurricular Activities Subcommittee Meeting. Before we conduct this meeting, we'd like to establish a quorum. Kathy Ellis?
Here.
Cynthia?
Here.
Jared?
Here.
Tony Rodriguez present. Also, we have Superintendent Ms. Mattoff here with us today. Today's agenda is just to get an update from our Athletics Department and our Arts Department, Music Department. We have respective guests Nick Lee, Matthew Campbell, Sarah Richards, and Rebecca Desmond. And I believe Mr. Carroll will not be with us at this time. There's a function going on at the high school with the girls' basketball game this evening. We're going to reverse the role from last time where we had athletics start first and kind of took up a little bit of time, but actually, Mr. Carroll was in attendance.
I'm sorry I'm late. We had a girls' basketball.
Nice. I'd like to, if Sarah Richards can come to the makeshift podium and give us an update on our Arts Department and what's going on.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. The Art Department's having a good year. We just are getting into kind of award seasons with the high school. We sent off 88 entries to the Scholastic Art Awards last week. We sent 75 entries to the UMass Dartmouth Emerging Young Artists. So that's what's been happening at the high school. You know, the elementaries and the middle schools are really back in the groove after the pandemic. You know, we're back really producing art, reading, writing, and speaking about art. And as I've been going around, I've been really pleased with what I've been seeing in the classrooms. Last time I was here, we talked about lighting and sound for the auditorium. That has lots of progress there. The biz went out, the bids were awarded to Boston Light and Sound and Barbizon through all of you. And now it's in Dr. Cobb's and Carl Walker's hands, and I believe it's moving forward. So we're excited about that, to get that done. The TV studio upgrade I've been working on, we had a big installation in August. It's about 80% done. We had backorders. Things have just been backordered. So I just met with the company last week, and it looks like February vacation, they'll be able to come in and finish that, finish that install. The only thing left would be we have a couple robo cameras that are going in the balcony, so we need to get some ethernet run to them so that we can just, you know, broadcast right out of the auditorium for any event. It'll be much easier than, you know, Mr. Halco now setting everything up and taking everything down. And it'll be great to work with the BCA because they'll be able to use it too, and it'll be great for our kids to film things. The other project I'm working on right now with John Messia from the mayor's office is they're doing some artwork for under the bridges downtown. So we're going to have, the two photo clot teachers are going to work with some kids to get some photos of around Brockton for that project. I'll work with him more. We just started talking about it last week, so I'll work with him more, and we can maybe present that too later, but I think that's going to be very fun. And the teachers are very excited about it, and they'll roll it out to the kids right after Christmas. And the other, actually, photo project we're working on in collaboration with the Health Department and Dennis Gennich is a Photo Voices. It's an after-school club. They meet on Tuesdays at the high school, and they take photographs, and it's based on gambling, and it's through the Spring House, and it's a health grant. So we have our kids doing that, and they're really excited about it. So that's kind of what's happening in the Art Department.
Open up the floor to the members if anybody has any questions.
Sorry, always me. What is Photo Voices? I'm sorry, I just don't under- So now I wish Dennis was here. I'm just curious. Photo Voices, it's, they're working with the Spring House, and they, they teach kids about gambling and a gambling problem. It's a, it's a grant that's coming through the Health Department, but they work with students and they take photographs. And it's a great program. They come down and they, they teach them all about, you know, the dangers of gambling, but then the kids have to do all these photos, but it's community kind of based photography. Okay. And we did it before the pandemic, and it was great. And then we had a couple years we didn't get it going, so it's good to have it back again this year.
Great.
And the state has put money towards this grant because of the approval of sports betting?
Yeah. I was wondering if it was tied to that.
It's part of that bill that pumped more money into this for, because obviously-
Yes.
You're going to have more, and kids will have access. I mean, not legally, but-
Of course. And it is Dennis's baby. It is. One of my photo teachers pairs up with him, so it's a great collaboration, but it is his baby, not mine. No, that's great. Thanks for the clarification. I just didn't, I'm like, Photo Voices sounds like an oxymoron, and I wondered how it connected. So thank you. Yep.
Any other members with any questions? Ms. Holmes?
Just in terms of the art competitions that you mentioned, too, those available only for the, is that only the high school students that are participating?
Those are high school students, yeah.
Do the middle school students, anybody participate in any kind of other, is there any other art showcase or anything like that?
Just internal stuff, not, not external. We're always kind of looking for more external competitions to compete in.
Okay.
But no, middle schools mainly in, you know, within Brockton Public Schools, we have participate in a lot of things. They win prizes that way.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? I have a question on the, doing the, under the bridges. Is that going to be a seasonal type of project, or is that going to be year-round with the weather? I mean, how is that supposed to transpire?
It's year-round. John Messie has been working on it, and it's actually metal. It's like a zigzag metal structure that goes under the bridge, and then when you drive from one way, you see one photograph, and then when you drive from the other way, you see another photograph. That's really cool. So, you know, we'll brainstorm with the kids, things around Brockton, like maybe there's a picture of DW Field, or maybe there's a picture of a whole bunch of students' faces, and we're going to try to do things with, that represent, you know, young kids, high school kids, but even elderly populations, you know, so we can get everybody in there. That's what we're trying to come up with. So we'll come up with, you know, 20 or 30 photographs, and we will send them to John Messie on the mayor's office, and they will pick what they're going to do. But they're permanent structures, and they get printed on the metal.
Nice.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions. If anybody wants to close out, any other questions, follow-ups? Nobody? I'd like to thank you for your time, giving us an update with the department, and it's nice to see the students' artwork being showcased. I was one of those students, so thank you.
Well, thank you for the support.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to call Ms. Rebecca Desmond, and she will give us an update on the Music Department.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Desmond. I'm the new interim director of music. I started in mid-October, so I'm still kind of wrapping my brain around everything. We have several of our students from Brockton High School who are participating in the Senior District Festival coming up in January. They auditioned back in November, and then we recently had our students, grade seven, eight, and nine, who auditioned for Junior District. And we had several students who were selected to perform in those ensembles, and that's coming up in March. I believe it's the second weekend of March, March 10th and 11th. We also have a lot of our high school students who received All-State recommendations, so they will go and audition to be part of the All-State Choirs Band Orchestra, and that is the end of January. So those are a couple of the competitions that our students are doing. We just finished our marching band season, and I know a lot of people really enjoyed the show that they did this year and everything like that. A lot of great comments from people who are not Brockton residents, people who saw the band at games and who commended the band on the atmosphere that they were able to bring. We are currently working on a new curriculum in the Music Department, working towards a curriculum that has our students performing more in general music classes and providing those opportunities to create and really engage with music in ways that is beneficial to every student. So we're looking into all of our inventories at our schools. We have a lot of older instruments, a lot of damaged instruments, and looking into ways to replace a lot of those, looking to get more instruments into our general music classrooms at the middle school level. We don't really have a lot. Some schools have ukuleles, some, some schools have buckets for drumming, but there's no equity around what we have in different schools, so trying to bring in instruments to all of them. And then we are also looking into purchasing new marching percussion instruments for our marching band. I think the ones that we currently have are about 20 years old, and we would like to not only replace them, but also provide for our percussionists' stands for those drums so that when they're practicing inside, they don't have to wear them the entire time. They're heavy, if you've ever held a marching percussion instrument, but that's what I have.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the members? Mrs. Ellis?
Again, me. Out of all the things that we need in the Music Department, and you're a fresh set of eyes, and so there's great value in having somebody new come in and be able to look around and say, you know, not whether something's right or wrong, or what should be a focus. Out of all the things that you mentioned, what do you think are the highest, the top three highest priorities for this coming year?
I think marching percussion. A lot of those instruments are breaking, and being with how visible the marching band is and how often we travel and perform at different things, that is something that needs to be replaced. And we've been working on quotes for that for a couple of years now. We just haven't been able to really get anything done because COVID. The elementary instruments are in dire need. Teachers have been replacing the tubing on them and the pegs on them to the best of their ability, sometimes spending their own money. But there's, on the ORF instruments, the bars that are on them, many of the bars are lost, broken, and they're just, they're getting to a point where they're beyond repair. And then the last bit would be the middle schools. And for middle schools, I would really like to be able to find what teachers are going to be able to deliver best to their students and make sure that they have those, those opportunities available for them.
I'm really impressed with the fact that you, I'm impressed and pleased that you included the elementary and the middle schools, because when we think of music, we're always thinking about the marching band at the high school, always thinking about who are the most obvious that you picture as, you know, in music. And so I love the idea that you're truly looking at elementary and middle school as well, so we can bring those folks up into the high school. So thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Any other members with questions? When you talk about, you know, different styles of music, how do we incorporate different cultures into our music department, knowing that we're very diverse?
And that is, I think, as music teachers, we, we have the ability to do that, I think, easier than a lot of, a lot of other curriculums at the time. There are a lot of really great resources. There's one that I found recently that's, it's called Musician of the Month Project, and it is a, it's an organization, and they feature, their whole idea is to feature non-neurocentric composers and world musicians and things like that. I think it's really important to figure out within each school, how do, how is what we're teaching in the classroom representative of the students in front of us? And I think that that changes for each teacher in each one of our buildings. But then how do we also provide opportunities for students to experience music that they may not necessarily experience? And that's one of the things that we're talking about with the curriculum. One of the parts of our curriculum has to do with music and culture, and bringing in music that not only students can see themselves in, but also music that gives them windows into other cultures so that they can experience more throughout the world. As much as I'm a, I'm a classical pianist, but classical music can be boring and tired, and depending on how it's being delivered, it's not interesting to our students. So I think that's one of the things that we're doing with the curriculum, and it's one of the things that I think is most important to our classrooms here.
Thank you. And when you talk about, you know, needing equipment, some that have fallen, have you come up with a budget of how much it's going to cost, what you need overall?
I have like a very, it's not an exact budget, but I did, I looked up a couple different things before I came tonight. I can share them if you'd like.
Yes, yes, this is the governing-
Sure.
Part of the governing body of the school department.
I will ask for all sorts of things.
Don't worry about this guy.
So the marching percussion is probably going to be about $15,000 to $20,000, and that would include those stands for students to be able to put the instruments on when we are, when we're working. For elementary school, the ORF instruments are the, they're the small, well, they're not small, but they're the wooden instruments, and they have the keys on the top, and the students play them with the mallets. To get a set of 15 of those is about $6,000. And then we would want to make sure that we're replacing in a way that schools that are in the most need and the schools that have the most damaged instruments, that we're trying to put those into places. So it's, that's one of the things that we really have to look at our inventory to see what really needs to be replaced so that we can kind of work that out. A set of 30 classroom ukule, ukuleles is about $1,200. Some schools have ukuleles. Buckets are free from Low, or not Lowe's, sorry, Home Depot. We had buckets donated from there. I know there are plenty of computer programs as well that students will be able to compose music on, and those are yearly subscriptions, so it's a little bit.
The sets for 6,000, how many?
It's, it would be, let's see, the one I pulled up today, it's 15, and there's, it's a varying sizes, so you have like some Glock and Spiels, which are the metal bars, xylophones, and metallophones. The xylophones are the wooden bars, and metallophones are also metal bars.
So it's 15 at 6,000 each?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How about the harp? I've always been a little-
The harp?
It's 15 for six, that are 6,000 each?
No, 15, it's a 15 set for $6,000.
Oh, okay.
So there's 15.
So, because I misunderstood that. Did you get that?
Oh, no.
It's not 6,000 each, it's 6,000 for 15.
For total?
Yeah, for 15 instruments.
Okay, got it.
15 total instruments.
But would you need that at different schools?
Yeah, so we would have to look at and see what different schools have.
Okay, so it's-
So we could get that and then kind of decide it out.
The set of the 15 is 6,000?
Yes.
But you might need four or five of those?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I had just-
And I would know better like once we get inventories, because the inventories are not complete or up to date. We didn't really have them until last year, so we need to do our homework on that.
I think this sounds great, because my kids are still wondering what they're supposed to do with all the practice they had on a recorder. And so, so I support the music and arts, definitely.
The recorder is a special instrument. You could have a recorder ensemble in your house.
Exactly.
I could give you some music, would you like some?
So, no, this sounds good.
Thank you. So I'm pretty sure, I mean, Aldo's not here to-
Yeah, I'll talk to Aldo.
That's what we have. I want to make sure that, that these students get these instruments. But thank you for your presentation, your time. Looking forward to the concert on the 20th.
Yes, it's going to be wonderful. Students sound amazing, so.
Yep.
Week from tonight.
Oh, am I performing? No, no, I'm too old. I've aged out of high school.
No.
Sorry.
Singing.
Any, oh, sorry, Cynthia.
So when you talk about the new curriculum, are you exploring different curriculums, or you have one in mind, that you have one? And is it already made, or are you guys making this as you go?
We are, we're creating it. They, there are, there are programs that we can use for our, like kindergarten to second grade, we like to use the Fire Robin and Second Steps curriculum. But I think more importantly than getting a canned curriculum or something like that, we're creating our own so that we can make sure that our students are receiving a well-rounded curriculum that is based on what we feel is the most important for them. So last year, we analyzed all of the new music standards that came out in 2019 and started there and decided, what do we feel as a department is the most important thing for our students to be able to learn and experience in our classrooms? And so we're, we're working from there to start figuring out where we want to go. We are selecting music that will be available to students. We have a binder of music right now in elementary schools. It is, it is dated, so we're looking to update that with not only, not only removing some of the music from that that's not relevant anymore or that's not culturally appropriate, and then adding in new music that is multicultural, that world music, different things like that. So we're not going for a canned curriculum. We will create it ourselves.
Okay, because I just wonder if it's easier to get a curriculum and then adapt it, better than creating it? Like, just the idea of like reinventing the wheel, is that, I mean, it sounds like you obviously have had great discussions with your department, so it's something that you guys have agreed with, but I just wonder, time effectiveness and just like what you're saying, adapting it to the students that you guys have in front of you?
Well, I know in the, in general for music, there are, there are not really a lot of canned curriculums that you can purchase, and ones that you can purchase, in my experience, are not worth the money. I think that we will have a far better curriculum with our teachers creating it and our teachers figuring out what works best in Brockton than we would if we were to spend money outside of the city on a, on a curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Holmes?
Just before, it slips my mind, I was going to say, I don't know if there's any opportunity for some of the high school ensembles or anybody to be able to perform for some of the younger kids, but I know at least 30 years ago or more, that was one of the, the big enticing features for the younger kids, to kind of rope them in early and kind of showcase where they can go with music, is being able to see, you know, the older kids performing at the highest levels. And if that's something that, you know, Brockton could accomplish this year before the end of the school year at least, whether it's winter, spring, whenever, I know sometimes the kids get a big kick out of that and seeing a concert or something. So if they're not able to make it to a holiday concert, if there's an opportunity for them to see something later on in the spring, I think that'd be, might be a good investment in, in time and some in-house field trip or something like that, if they could come to the high school and see a performance, that might be, might be worth looking at that.
And we, we had looked into that for the holiday concert. It didn't end up working out that we could get it done. We were going to have the middle school band and chorus students come to the high school, but there's a half-day that Thursday, which would make busing difficult. We do have the all-city chorus and band concerts that happen the beginning of March, where we have our high school groups that perform for the middle school groups and so on, but I would love to see more opportunities like that, because I agree with you, we need to expose students to that at a younger age.
No further questions? Thank you very much, and hopefully next time that you're in front of us, all those music instruments are purchased.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kevin Carroll, if you could come up and give us an update on our athletics and any other things that are going on.
Good evening, everybody. We just finished up our fall season. Back in November, we had a lot of great success on the field and on the courts. We had three of our student athletes get named to the Herald All-Scholastic Teams, two for football, one for soccer, and that soccer player actually gets selected for the All-New England team, which is quite an accomplishment. We're still waiting to hear about who has been selected for Enterprise All-Scholastics. Coaches have put in nominations, so hopefully within the next week or so, we will have those teams. We had three of our teams qualify for the MIA tournament, that was Boys and Girls Soccer and our football team. Thanksgiving Day game at Fenway was absolutely fantastic for those of you who went. I mean, it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The kids loved it, the coaches did, and I think the fans had an awesome time, so that was a great way for, to send Coach Columbo out on his last game. And because Peter was selected as a Patriots Coach of the Week by Andre Tippett and the Patriots Foundation, we were invited to Gillette just last week, so Nick, Mr. Lee and I went out with a, a group of our senior football players and our senior from the cheerleading team, and they were part of a Visa Financial Literacy Event that was out there, which was great. Teddy Bruski was there and a former, a lot of the former Patriots, and that was, you know, that was a great opportunity for them to go out. And this weekend, just because of our partnership with Fenway and how we conducted ourselves there, they've donated 50 tickets complimentary for our football team, so we have a busload of kids going out for the First Annual Wasabi Bowl, which is going to be on Saturday at 11 o'clock, so the kids are super excited about that. And now we have our winter sports underway. They started the Monday after Thanksgiving, and we actually started competing last week. That's why I was running late, I had to get the girls' basketball, their home opener started. Couple of great things that we've been able to do, I've heard you talk about getting kids excited to go to Brockton High. We've hosted the middle school Boys and Girls Soccer Championships up at Marciano. We had the middle school football championships up there. So to put that on the big stage for the kids, to get them in that kind of environment, and you know, we, we try to make it as first-class and make it as memorable as we can for them. I think we accomplished that. And just a couple of updates, we have been working with a design firm, Activitas. Mike and I have sat with them, and we have renderings for the two athletic fields at Brockton High School behind the AZF rink at the Paul Sino Fields. So those, I think we're going to meet with them on Thursday to, to have the 3D renderings, and they're also working on coming up with design plans for some of the middle schools, the five, four middle-
Five. Is it, is it- The Four Compass.
Four Compass and Davis. So they are working, they've been working with us since, I want to say, September, and it's our hope to go before the city council in the, in the new year to, to put the proposal together.
Yeah, they'll come back to, when he's done with all of them, they'll come back to the Facility Subcommittee, and then they could also do it the same night as the school committee and present it at the full school committee as well, and then we'll have to ask for a counselor to sponsor us to go back.
Yeah, so the only thing that I mean that-
And chemistry update on the scoreboard?
Scoreboard, from, so a new scoreboard, we-
It's a video scoreboard.
Video scoreboard out at Marciano. I mean, that, that one has, you know, we've got our money's worth out of that, and I want to say in January, it's going to be delivered, and it's quite a process. I mean, because it's wireless, we need to do the internet running up to the press box, so there's a little bit of work that's going to be done, but when it is finished, it's, it's going to be fantastic. Like I said, it's going to be a video board, three separate screens or one big screen. You can do a multitude of things with it, and it's just not going to be for football. It'll be for, you know, if we want to have family movie nights out at the stadium, there's a projector capability for it. We can show pictures of graduation as kids come across, we can do a live feed of the stage, so parents that are sitting far away will be able to see the sons and daughters walk the stage. So there's just a lot of things that we didn't have before with this.
Yeah, we, we sent out a PO to them in May.
In May, yep.
And just COVID has delayed all this stuff, so we hope to have it in-
We hope to have it, hopefully by the spring season. It should be done, and it should be ready for graduation. That's our hope.
Questions by any members? Mrs. Ellis?
So we have a couple of questions, or clarifications maybe.
Sure.
The two fields that are, that we have the renderings for behind the AZF, what kind of fields are they?
Well, they are, they could be used for a number of things. So football, soccer, lacrosse, softball, track, and we'll have a practice baseball infield. So we can, I mean, the good thing about the turf is we can line it by season, so we won't put all the lines out, because that can, that can get confusing with all the different sports.
Yeah.
So we have talked to our facilities department, and they would paint it just based on the season, but it can be used for just about anything. And the band could go out there, I mean, it's just not for athletics. It can be used for a number of things.
And are we thinking the same concept with the additional five at the middle schools?
I think the additional five, it's all going to depend on what they come back with their survey, is like how much space they have and what can fit in there. But this, this company we work with, I mean, they're, they're pretty creative, and they can give you all the possible options. So I would suspect it would be football, soccer, and then you could probably do a baseball, softball, if the middle schools bring that back, but right now- baseball, softball, if the middle schools bring that back, but right now they don't have that.
Okay. And, you know, with the renderings that we just received for the two fields behind the high school, what would you say in terms of the turnaround time before actual work begins on these? Like, you know, what season are these athletes gonna be looking at?
Yeah, so I think that, what, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, they said if we go to city council and we get the approval for the budget, and then there's permitting that goes in that has to go through, they said probably shovel in the ground maybe July, July of August? And hopefully be finished by Thanksgiving or Christmas of 2023.
Yeah.
If all goes well.
Will this help us, will this help us redirect some of the scheduled games, practices that we're, that we're utilizing for fields that fall under the Parks Department?
I believe it would, because I think we talked about having our outside grounds, folks maintain the turf and just make sure that it's, you know, they have to do a grooming of it, like every week, just to make sure that the pellets that are there just lay consistent. I think it would definitely, it would take off from the Parks Department, because the Parks Department doesn't even take care of the Polisino Fields, it's our outside grounds.
Okay.
Yeah, we take care of those. Yeah, but this would just give us so many options, because right now there is only one turf field in the whole city.
Yeah.
And between football and soccer and all the seasons, and then, you know, with the weather around here, it's a little bit of rain and the grass fields are unplayable, this will just give more people more of an opportunity to play.
If we did, I'm just spitballing here, throwing it out there, if we did do the five middle schools, even though we don't have those, some of those sports at the middle schools, we could still use those fields even if they're high school games, correct? So they'd be, I mean, they'd be interchangeable for whatever sport, it doesn't, I guess it doesn't matter if we do those fields over whether we offer those sports at the middle school at the time, there's still new fields we'd be able to utilize globally.
Right, it's community-wide too.
Yeah.
Community-wide, sure. And I mean, I think, I think that is the, the big struggle, because we have so many people that want to use Marciano because of the turf and because they can play year-round.
Yeah.
Especially soccer in our community, it's probably the most popular youth sport, we have that and basketball, but I just think by having two more fields, it just gives coaches and teams just more of an opportunity to, to get out there.
That's exactly, I was, in my head, I'm thinking soccer, to be honest with you. It's one, the one sport that I think is, not one, but is so international with how diverse our population is, I can see it being something that is pulling in a lot of students, just, and I figured if we did the five middle schools, you're right, having the two extra is gonna be a huge lift for us, but if we had the other five, that would be amazing.
Yeah.
And what would be, cost aside, for something like that, they're already working on the renderings for those five, right? Right now, or they're, they've started working on those?
Yeah, they said they probably have something for us mid-January.
Great, okay, good.
Because what the city council instructed us to do is come back with everything.
Yeah, okay.
With all, with the high school behind, you know, Polisino Fields and then with all the, the middle schools. We added the Davis.
Yeah, throw it in there.
Yeah.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
No other questions? Marciano Stadium, I know we had a conversation about resurfacing that, would there be a, would we wait to do the surface over before the Polisino, or do we get the Polisino Field done first, then tackle Marciano, so you don't lose?
Great question, that would, we would have to, if that did come to fruition, we would have to get with the company that won the bid, just to see what their timeline was, because turf fields, I mean, they're, they're a hot commodity around the state, and finding people that do the work correctly is also another challenge.
He gave us a price for that, correct?
He gave, yeah. I want, I want to say it was close to 1.2.
Yeah, for a refund, but we would, we would bring it forward to the same.
To remove it and then put it down and to resurface the track. I think it was all in one.
Okay.
That's what they wanted to do, like while we're here and you're ripping up the turf and you have, you would have, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's-
So we, we would put it in with the full request, and that way you could bid those two jobs together, so that they're at the high school, they do both at the same time, according to the schedule, so not losing a football.
A football, soccer, field hockey, so I would, if, if, I had, in a perfect world, if they could say that they could, it, like, at the end of the spring season, like May, June?
Right after graduation.
Right after graduation? That's when I would want them to, to do that project. So we knew it would be done, the weather usually cooperates, and then you'd have your field ready for the fall season.
Now, looking at the, the middle schools, are we looking at, you know, adding a track as well, not just a playing field?
I don't think that we took a look at adding a track, we might, we could, but I mean, that's, that's a huge, I mean-
I mean, I, I mean, to, to, to offer, because in the middle schools, we do have-
Yeah, a track and field.
We do offer track, but we do offer it up at Marciano, so I think, Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do bring the kids from the middle school up, up to Marciano, and we race right, right there, because we have the stands, we have the facilities, I mean, we have the restrooms, I mean, there's all the, the things that you need to have something like that, and what do we have, about four or five of them?
We could look at a track, at least one.
Four or five meets?
Put it on the other side of the city. Yeah. I'll talk to the guy.
So I just think that, I mean, to put the, to put a track in-
Maybe I'll have them consider, like, look at east and north, just that, so there's a, give us a price, it will be expensive, but at least it gives you one on the other side of the city.
Okay.
Because we only have one track, you know, in the city. It's like, if I went on the east side of town, I have to drive all the, to Brockton High or on the north side, I mean, West is right there, but, you know, having another option in the city to have a track, you know, that'd be wonderful, especially with the middle school, so you don't have to bust the kids to the high school to do that. And also, we have a beautiful tennis court out there, and I know I've asked you about the basketball court, because we don't have one at, at Brockton High, and we explored it and looking at a location where we can-
I'm gonna be honest, I haven't.
I think, no, Jamie has.
I think Jamie might have, but I have not been involved in that.
He has, I'll have, he'll have to give us an update, because Jamie Damesco was working, because he worked for the, with the company that did West, so I can get an update from him. We were looking at the old courts that used to be volleyball.
They were volleyball courts.
Right on the other side of the pool, in between the pool and the-
With the containers?
Softball, with those containers, that's a real flat surface, that used to be squash or some-
No, they were, they were volleyball courts.
They were also ball, I knew they were.
And the squash courts were over by where the freshman football field is now.
I think that would be, because it's so flat, yeah, it's actually, would be the easiest place, the cheapest place to put it, because it was volleyball courts.
Yep.
The pavement's still there, it just has to be ripped up.
What are we doing for recruitment to grow our athletics? I remember last time you were in front of us, you told us that, you know, the numbers were declining specifically with our female athletes.
So I do have the numbers here in front of me from the fall, and I'm happy to say that we do have more females participating than we have in the past, you know, before COVID, and I saw the same with winter sports, so I just think that by, number one, putting a lot of what we do on social media, the way that the kids follow it on our Instagram page, and that has helped, you know, get some excitement. Also, I know that before COVID, actually a month before, we shut everything down, we had all of the middle school kids that were interested in athletics come up to the high school, we toured them around the facility, they got to see a basketball game, I would love to do that again come February, right before break, see one of the, one of the home games play. I know that some of our coaches have invited the middle school kids up to watch the games during the season, we'll continue to do that. I want to say that we have some camps lined up with our basketball and volleyball coaches to get our middle school kids involved, so as much as we can to, you know, get the kids excited to come up to the high school, we'll continue to do it. But I mean, just, Tony, just last year alone, we didn't have enough girls to have a JV soccer team. And this past year, we did have a JV and varsity team, and we had, let me see, 41 girls total in the program, which was good compared to 18 the year before.
Nice, nice. Well, thank you for your time, if anybody else has any other questions, Mrs.?
The summer camps for middle school students, or was it the clubs?
That would be, summer camps.
Did you, one of the motivations that you do to recruit, you said something about-
They just have, they, instructional camps is where it's like a, a day or two where the kids come up and for two or three hours, they work with the kids from the varsity teams just on skills and drills and maybe do a little bit of scrimmage. That's the plan to do, I know that the girls' basketball coach wants to do that.
So is that co-ed or that's just like?
That would be just, we, we target the middle school girls for the, for the girls' team, and then I'll talk with Coach DeBarros and see if he wants to get the middle school boys up, which I'm sure we would.
And we hosted, we, we gave Coach DeBarros permission to host a summer league at the high school this year, because, which hasn't been held in a long time.
And he had a fall league up at there, too.
Oh, yeah, fall, too, so we've been able to, and Mario Lamas runs a big summer program, which also gets a ton of the middle school kids involved, and then, yeah, Manny did the, the fall league, which we haven't done in a long time.
Right.
And binary students, do they just play whatever they identify as? Oh, okay.
Yes.
There's no, like, has there been any, like, rules from the?
From, from the MIAA? No, it's just however they identify, if, that's, that's where they play.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Ellis?
You said social media is working really well. Who does your social media?
We have a couple of people. We have Jess Hodges, Communications Director, she has another girl working for Kelsey Lynch.
Yeah.
So anytime we get photos or scores, we send that to them and they post everything. And I want to say that we had, last time I checked, 2,400 followers on Facebook and close to the same number on Instagram.
Have we ever thought about, I'm doing it really bad, I'm just making this up, but like, looks like athletic ambassadors, you know, not just Kelsey and Jess, but like having, you know, actually students that maybe are part of like the photography club or something that attend events and getting like real-time photos with their friends, like that kind of thing, and, and using the word "community," I'm just, I'm throwing it out there because that kind of fun, you know, it's, it comes through in social media, especially if you have a student that's like, "Look where I am right now," like, and I realize that's a lot more work, and it's easy for me to sit here and say that, because it takes a lot of work, but maybe eventually it would be something that we could have students rolling up their own pictures to show that they're attending these events, which would encourage other students and everyone to attend them.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think that's something that we could work with the art department, if we have some students that are really passionate about photography and we get them in and they can get action shots and send them to Jess, and I think that's a great idea.
The TV Club films a lot of the sports, and we air it on VCA. They're just doing that already, but they could do still posts.
It, it just feels like when it's coming from their perspective, it's a far more powerful message than us saying, "Come to the games," and they're, they're enjoying themselves laughing and that sort of thing, and we have a student representative that comes in and does reports for us for the school committee meetings, and it's one of, I know for me, it's one of my most favorite times coming to school committee, to see what's happening on the screen with those smiling faces and that those pictures came from them, like they're reporting on themselves, and for me, it's powerful, I just think it might be something that would be a good draw.
Okay.
Peer-to-peer, that's all.
Cool.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Homer?
Nothing? I have one more question. D1, big school, 4,000s plus, where does our athletics department support each different sport with our student athletes that want to go to the next level, as far as getting their game film, talking to recruiters, how do we support that?
Well, one of the things that we have done is we've purchased the Huddle account, which is, the Huddle is a, it's a service that we pay for, I mean, it's, it's not cheap, but what it does is you're able to share game film with other teams, kids can access the accounts and take game footage and make highlight films that they can send to college coaches, coaches have access to it to do the same thing. The unfortunate thing with our Huddle, we have a brand-new Huddle camera that they gave us for indoors for the gym, but the way that the gym is constructed, it doesn't meet the setbacks to install it. So coaches have been filming with their phones and iPads and uploading video that way, but we had somebody from Huddle, we had actually two representatives come out to see if they could make the camera work, and the way that the beams run down the sidelines, you need a 10-foot setback, and we don't, we don't meet it, it's, which is crazy, but there's not one spot in that gym that they could make it work. But we do have the capability, like I said, the kids can see their videos, they can see their, their game film, they can break it down, they can send it. I know our coaches have been very involved in, in contacting coaches for the kids who they feel can play at the next level. One of the things that they're stressing is their academics, and because a lot of the kids, for as talented as they are, if they don't have a certain GPA, they won't even get an opportunity to, to talk to a coach. But I think that we do have a lot of good-
Is still the guidance council is in place?
Dave Ray is helping out, I think that he gets, I mean, honestly, I think he just gets overwhelmed with the number of, of kids that go to see him and the parents that call.
Yeah, we might have to think about that in the future season.
Have one that's just assigned to athletics.
Well, we have one now, but it's just got so big.
It just, it's just gotten big, and I mean, there's a lot of things that kids, we're trying to bring them up to speed about. If you think you're going to play at the next level, to get them signed up for the NCA clearinghouse, create an account, make sure that they're taking all the classes they're supposed to, to be NCA-eligible, so there's some education that we need to continue to do with our kids, but I feel that our coaches have identified those boys and girls that can play, and they're, they're getting them the, the correct information and getting their info out to the, to the collegiate coaches.
One last question, promise. How do you evaluate our coaches?
How do we evaluate this? Well, there's a few things that I take a look at, is number one is how many kids start the year, how many kids finish the year? I think that's super important, that you retain those kids. I like to see them do exit interviews with the kids to figure out, you know, what things worked, what didn't work, what could we do to make the program better, how they interact with kids, how they interact with parents, how do they communicate with me? There's, there's a lot that goes into it, but I'm pretty confident that I've been here for seven years, that the, the coaches know what we expect, just not myself, but what Mike and the school committee and the principal and the community expects from, from our coaches that work with our kids.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Ellis?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I swear this is the last one. Last time we met, I remember us talking about the challenges with getting, getting physicals, getting physicals from students for them.
Still a challenge.
Okay, I was curious if we had made any headway with that or if it's still something that we're chasing and struggling.
Well, we will continue to offer free physicals, I think that we'll do that with Signature Healthcare before the end of the school year, and we're going to encourage the kids again, that if you get it in June, you're good for the whole year. So even if your physical's going to expire in October, just get it done now, it's free. Also, Lynda Cahill sent me a stack of free physicals for urgent care over in South Weymouth. I was able to give those out before the start of the winter season, and I want to say that eight kids took advantage of that. So, so we're trying as best we can, you know?
The neighborhood health center ever gets set up at the high school, that's part of what they have to provide.
That's what I was thinking, too.
All the time.
Yeah.
Like, that's not just June, that would be, they, they would have to do it at least three times a week, that's part of the whole, like, free physicals for students to-
Yeah, to be able to play athletics.
That's right, you know, that, that's a requirement of their grant.
Okay, perfect. I just figured I'd ask, because I remember we were talking about it, and you guys were trying so hard and it's like, so thank you for the update.
Yeah, of course. No more questions, Tony, you got one more for?
I have one more for you. Family ID, could you explain family ID and do you feel that it works?
Yeah, honestly.
And how does that affect families that don't have the capabilities to get on there too?
Well, I think that where we used to be with getting kids registered for sports and where we are now, we've come a, a long, long way.
I think the one-to-one device is really, the one benefit of COVID.
Yeah, I mean, now we have kids that can log in with their laptop- Yeah, I mean, now we have kids that can log in with their laptop. Um, and the beauty of it is if you regi-, once you register and create an account as a freshman, when you go to register for winter season or spring season, even the next year, your account is still there. So it will autofill all the information you provided from the previous season. So all your parents really need to do is just sign off on the, the consent forms, the concussion waivers. There's just, I think there's eight separate things that they need to do. Everything else is autofilled. So it has really helped coaches. I mean, where I share the file with them. I mean, you can ask Matt, if he had a hundred kids trying out for football and six or eight different pieces of paper came in for this, that, and the other thing. I mean, there's a stack of papers like this. Now I just share an electronic file and all that information is right there. So when they travel, we've had issues where kids have had, been injured. The trainer is able to look up the kid, call the family, this is what's going on. We're not shuffling for papers. So I just think that it's just made it so much easier for families, coaches, trainers. I, I think it's been a game changer. And for the amount of money we pay for it, I think it's one of the best bargains we have.
How do we, we only use that at the high school level, not the middle school, correct?
Well, Nick would have to-
I can speak to it. We tru-, we tried, uh, but the way the platform is set up, um, like Kevin's umbrella is one school, Brockton High. I would have to have seven individual schools. So it wasn't going to calibrate the same way.
No.
Uh, as Brockton High. I'll speak. It is awesome. I think it's awesome, what it provides. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't work with middle school unless we were all under one umbrella and they couldn't do it for me. Cause we tried, we tried a few years ago. Cause that would make, make it far easier. Because as you can imagine with middle school, you want a paper that goes home and doesn't come back. It's, it's, it would be easy. But, um, they just couldn't, with the platform, they couldn't figure out a way for us to utilize that without, um, making seven separate accounts, which wouldn't really help at that point.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Sorry so long-winded, but thank you for having me.
All right.
Next, uh, we have Mr. Nick Lee, if he can come up and give us an update on middle schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we have, uh, just finished up the fall season. We had, like Kevin said, the soccer championships at Brockton High, which is always good. Like Kevin said, getting the kids accustomed to that field and what we can provide at Brockton High. Um, we also had the cross-country season, which we now do at, at West. Um, so Pluff took home the girls' and boys' championship for soccer. And, um, North was victorious in, um, cross-country, which is one of the, uh, best seasons of the year because it really includes a lot of kids. Um, we ran into, um, the problems, I believe, when we were in here last year, with the, the biggest problem I had, obviously, is still the physicals. Linda gave us a bunch of vouchers, which really helped. Um, and the buses, the buses are great now. Um, I've always had to, no matter how organized I am, the buses always seem to be something, you, something happened every day with first student. And now, being able to have a bus at the middle schools and like start on time. I mean, I'd have parents calling me and ask what time the game starts and I can't even really, I hope 3:15. It could be anywhere from 3:15 to 3:45, you know, inside of that. Uh, that's my hope. But this year's been awesome. Um, I know last year we delayed till after Christmas to play basketball for that reason, to get that under control. But the, that is the biggest problem with the middle school sports to that, to this point, was always getting their, getting the kids there on time as best we could. And now we seem to take care of that, which has, uh, been a blessing. Uh, we have intermurals running, um, elementary, middle, and high school. Uh, basketball season just started. Um, and everything is, seems to be going fine. Um, the physicals, I'm hoping, will take care of themselves once that building is built. Cause that is still a big, a big problem. Um, you know, is getting, you know, I went as far as looking into last year, temporary guardianship and putting kids on a bus and, um, cause I have to be the one to look at a twelve-year-old and say they can't play because they don't have a physical, which is awful. So that, any help in that area moving forward, if we could remedy that, um, middle school is looking pretty good. Uh, when we started the track a few years ago, that's a big hit at Brockton High. Um, we do the meets, we have probably about three hundred kids total for that, for the year, um, which is great. I'm good with equipment, uh, shirts, all that stuff. I really don't have, I don't have anything to ask for, really.
Nice. Any questions from the members? Mr. Homer?
I know, we, we talked about the physicals just a minute ago with Mr. Caro as well. But is, is there anything that we need to do in terms of communication for families? Is it, is there anything that's like, is it a language barrier? Is it anything about, um, I know it's, maybe once the student is an athlete and is involved, they understand the rhythm of like, your physical is good for thirteen months, right?
Yes.
So it's good for, but is it, do you find that, is it a persistent problem every year it's the same student? Or, and they, and they're just not up to date? Or do they, once they're involved in activities or athletics, they kind of understand the rhythm, they know what they need to do? It doesn't become a problem? Is it a problem with the middle school?
I think they know what they need to do.
Okay.
I think it's, you know, in my house, my mom took care of all that, you know? Um, I, I think they're all aware of what they need to do to get a physical. It's just getting them there.
Getting them there, right.
Having a guardian there. A lot of times the kids' parents work at night or they're not around. Um, that is the biggest problem. I don't think it's that they, they don't know what's expected. I think the, and that was the whole idea about family ID. Kevin put me onto it. That was also, um, a way, if we could put that in at the middle school, it was going to alleviate some of that problem at the high school, um, because we would start them in sixth grade. It just didn't work out the way. And I tried to figure out a way to, um, put all of our kids into, uh, family ID. It just didn't, it just, it, it ended up being more work.
Okay.
Um, so I think that in the future, if that building is a possibility, that's going to really help.
Okay.
Um, my numbers have been pretty good this year, um, all things considered.
I just, I think in terms of, you know, working in the schools, I know when students are registering, they need to have a physical to be, you know, just registered in, in that regard too. And I know sometimes students will look for a copy of their physical, we'll have to like send them to the nurse to get a copy from their record to bring to athletics and say like, look, here's a copy of my up-to-date physical. But if there's anything that we could do to just kind of get that communication out earlier, maybe at the beginning of the school year or push harder, just anything that we could send home from families, any way we could use our media outreach to try and clarify, like maybe make it a little more simple. But I understand, like you said, like the logistics of a, a parent having-
It's interesting because kids can participate in phys ed, they can participate in intermurals, but if they play a sport, they need a physical.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, it's, it doesn't make much sense, but-
Good point. Well, hopefully too, I mean, we, we've, on, on, on the, just on the school registration side too. If we can tighten that up in some regard, that'll alleviate some of the strain on athletics because they would have a copy, we would have an up-to-date physical at the start of the year for the students who are enrolled anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that's something we can work on from the school committee side.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any follow-up questions from any other members? Mrs. Ellis?
Actually, I have a question. Sorry.
Ms. Menace?
Is, oh, how young do kids start with the sports? Is there anything in the city for like four-year-olds? That's definitely a personal question.
Matt? Community schools, um.
Well, you have intermurals at the elementary level.
Yes, but not, not four-year-olds.
Oh, four.
Oh, so it starts at like probably six around there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five, six.
Yeah, four-year-olds, I'm trying to think.
Have we thought of anything?
Probably youth soccer.
What's that?
Because like Taunton has soccer and soccer's such a big, um, sport here.
The town? The school?
Or is this leagues that are out of the Brockton public schools, like independent leagues?
Yeah, and Matt can speak to that. Um, most of the time, those leagues are outside of what we're doing.
Okay.
That would be like BY, BYUSA.
Soccer.
Yeah.
Okay.
They run a really good program.
That's been around forever.
Forever. The BYUSA, they run a really good program.
Cause I just wonder, cause we have a pre-K department now.
Right.
But it sounds like we're trying to keep it to the kindergarten level and up?
Yeah, so the, the, the real, um, the real issue becomes the space and the time.
Okay.
Um, with the amount of kids that you could, you, you could have in a gym with one teacher after school with intermurals. Um, a lot of times, you can, you can, uh, do different things at the middle school. Like we could, we have intermurals at a few schools in the morning, which is great.
Yeah.
Um, and then in the afternoon as well. So you could get two different sets of kids. A lot of times at the elementary school, um, you have one, one or two teachers doing intermurals for an hour, hour and a half. You, you've got to kind of stagger the amount of kids that you're going to have. You can't offer it to, you know, kindergarten through sixth grade every day because you'd have four hundred kids in the gym and that wouldn't be too safe.
Yeah.
So we try and spread it out throughout the year to give each kid an opportunity, um, for intermurals. And it, and it becomes a lot easier in the warmer weather too, when you go outside. So your numbers can go up, um, in, in the fall, early fall, in, in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
What athletic sport that is played at the high school level, that is not offered at the middle school level?
Oh, man. Lacrosse, baseball, softball, um, swimming.
Field hockey.
Field hockey.
Tennis.
Tennis, golf. Is that it?
Pickleball?
Pickleball's great. You ever played it?
No. Um, so what are we doing to grow that?
Um, for us, the biggest problem is the space. And those fields would take care of a lot of that. Um, and Matt and I work real close in the fall because there's a lot going on. We have football, um, soccer, and cross-country at every school. So we're always in close, um, dialogue to navigate that and make sure you have the space. The only way I could see adding more sports is if we started flip-flopping seasons and play things out of season. You know, like move soccer to the spring, uh, for middle school, um, so you could create more space. Uh, right now, the space in the fall, for example, you have football, soccer, two teams, and cross-country all playing on one field at each middle school. So adding something to that, like if you were to add field hockey, I don't know where, when, or where they would practice, you know? So the space is the real, the real issue with middle school.
So, uh, what would be, you know, and you have football, obviously, it's just the boys. Maybe you have females that play as well. And you have boys and girls. So you basically have three sport, no, actually four going at the same time.
Yeah.
And I know MIA doesn't, you know, oversee middle school sports.
No, so that-
So you could always change and do-
I can kind of do what I want, yeah.
Change and do whatever. Um, if you were to pick a sport to offer for the middle school level, what would it be right now as far as interest you're paying?
I mean, I would personally love to see baseball back.
I was disappointed that I played at West.
Um, but that would probably be the, that would probably be the most logical, I think, as far as space, time. Uh, the problem is, every year I do kind of a survey to see, um, how many kids are interested in there. I think one year I had eleven, was the last time I did it? Eleven kids in the entire city. I think four of them didn't have gloves. So, um, I, I think what would help the high school would be a feeder for, you know, field hockey or lacrosse, something like that. Um, and we'd have to maybe play that in between a season or something to give, um, give those teams ample space. Cause the real issue is the space.
I figured, you know, if you're offering volleyball at the high school, so you know there's an interest, why isn't there interest at the middle school level now?
We do have volleyball.
And then swimming. Uh, uh, and when I look at athletics, it's why should I wait or child wait until they get to the high school to play tennis or to join a swim team, lacrosse?
Yeah.
If we're not offering it at the middle school.
I think the tennis courts are the only courts we have in the whole city right now, right? As far as tennis courts.
Are usable.
Yeah.
Maybe Gilmore.
I mean, I'm with her with the pool too, cause I think I could get a lot of kids for swimming. But, uh, that pool is constantly in use. I don't know when we would fit that in. Cause they have a fall-in, spring season, right Kevin?
Uh, it's just winter now.
Oh, it's just winter now?
It's winter.
Uh, because there would be some interest in that, I'm, I'm sure.
No, that would be something we could look into for the fall.
Yeah, like I said, you-
The fall's not used, Kevin, after school?
Nope.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty open in the fall.
Yeah.
Except with community schools.
Yeah, they usually use it Saturdays though.
Or nights.
Or nights.
But we could be out of there. We could be out of there.
You'd be in and out of there before community school starts.
Yeah, that's definitely something that, um, and again, it showcases what we have at Brockton High. It brings the middle school kids there. I know Kevin and I, um, and Matt are constantly trying to sell, you know, Brockton High all, as much as we can. I mean, um, I still think it's a great, uh, school. I still think it's, all the offerings are great. Um, and I, you know, I promote the school as best I can with my middle school, uh, student athletes, uh, when I go and speak to them. Um, so I, I, I do think that, uh, you know, swimming is something we could probably look at. Uh, I think we could probably fit that in. And I think I could probably get a good amount of kids interested in that. And it wouldn't be such a bad thing for the city as well. Um, I know we, we were at school committee a couple of years ago talking about, um, swimming, with teaching kids how to, how to swim. And there was a real push for that. Um, this could be one of those ways.
Yeah, swimming is huge. Um, specifically what happened a few years ago with the tragedy at, at DW. I know, um, on the other side, a certain city council is, you know, advocating to get two more pools in, into the city. One in each on the north and the south, um, which could be utilized.
Right, right.
Uh, as well, so that's huge. I would love to see that, you know? Uh, Mrs. Ellis?
So I know last time we had talked, we, I remember this time last year, we were talking about baseball and you were saying the same thing, that like just recruitment is, is tough enough, finding enough bodies to be able to recruit a full team. So I know this sounds like a very adult thing, but have we ever thought about, um, doing just a very basic anonymous survey from like grades fourth to say eighth? And keeping it super simple, we're, we're asking, giving them a list of what they would want to play, and then if they can play. And the only reason I'm saying can is because I also remember us talking about some individuals or some students that are, you know, they are the caregivers after school for some of their younger siblings. And so they may want to play, but they can't play because they have-
See that a lot.
Yeah, they have family responsibilities. And so, which totally understand. Um, but have we ever thought about doing just an anonymous survey of certain, before we're trying to figure out space?
I've done surveys in the past, um, for that reason, but I've never gone that low to, like you said, third grade, fourth grade. That's something, that's something easy, something easy we could, we could do. I could do that easily.
And the only reason I bring that up is because to Cynthia's point, um, some of these kids have started in soccer in pre-K. They've started playing sports early. And, I mean, I know I have a niece right now and she's been through three sports already and she's six. And she's like, I don't like that, I don't like that. So they, they're kind of figuring it out, but I figured by like maybe fourth grade, they figured out kind of what they really like to play. But that's, that's more for you than me. But I'm just throwing it out there, like maybe we could get an idea of what are the most popular sports that from those age ranges they're looking for, before we start, start trying to solve for a space issue. Let's figure out the want issue first. And along with want, how many can actually play if we're able to recruit them? Just an idea.
That's a good idea. Um, and I'm always thinking along the lines of, um, That's a good idea. Um, and I'm always thinking along the lines of, um, my thought process is I wanna get as many kids involved as I can. That's why cross country and track are great, cause it involves a lot of kids. And, um, the kids really seem to support each other with those two sports all the time. And that's something that you, you have to see with your own eyes when we do cross country at, at West. Because it's, you, you go roll into the basketball season, it becomes super competitive. But in track and cross country, students from other schools support students from different schools. And it's kind of a, it's kind of one big team, which is nice to see.
Yeah.
Um, but that is an idea that, uh, of something that we could, we could try and.
I, I'm just throwing it out there that, you know, if we start seeing now at those age ranges, what the interest really is. Because to your point, those are, they're organic feeders into the high school.
Right.
And into those athletic programs. And the other thing too is like looking at the data, if say we put lacrosse on there and we have only like two people that respond to lacrosse, is it, does everybody understand what the game lacrosse is? Or is there really not an interest?
Right.
And then maybe that, you know, is an initiative of, we need to introduce what these sports are really all about. Because maybe part of the population, because we have such a diverse population, maybe part of the population just really doesn't understand lacrosse.
That's the truth for sure, yeah. And that's also something, you know, I could tie in with, with phys ed as well. I mean, we try to introduce as many, uh, new sports as we can on a yearly basis. The one I'm really looking into right now is, um, esports. That's really popular. I took a survey of kids at the lower levels. They love that. They actually give out scholarships for that now.
Yeah, they do. If you need any help, I rolled out an esports program before.
I do actually, cause I'm not a gamer in any way, shape or form, never really was.
Yeah.
Um,
I thought you had one of those special chairs they sell.
Yeah, they do.
Ever see those things?
Yeah. I think I got Nintendo ten years after it came out.
Yeah.
I have a topic.
On the side of the road somewhere.
Yeah, so, no, very popular.
I'm looking into because that is something that doesn't require space either.
And it's also, um, a revenue generator for competitions. And so if you do.
Big time.
Yeah, if you do League of Legends, if you do Fortnite, they could, you can draw other schools. You can draw, even if we have competitions, no, no students. There are just competitions that we hold that allow individuals to come in.
Right.
It becomes a revenue generator to pay for the, to pay for the program itself.
It's huge right now. And, um, the, the, the issue I have is, you can imagine how many people email me or reach out. Is there's a lot of, uh, phony companies too that are, that are into it. So any help that, if, if you've done it.
Yep.
Um, if there's some names you could give me, cause I just started kind of really peeling back, trying to figure out how I could incorporate this into what we're doing.
Yeah, I'll, we can talk offline. There's a couple of companies too that, um, work specifically with nonprofits. And so with our diverse population, we may be able to have access to grants and some other things. So let's.
The last survey I did that was the most popular esports.
There you go. Then, then honestly, I hate to say it, that's what we, we should focus on. Like if that's the most popular, it's kind of like, give the people what they ask for. Like if this is what the kids are asking for, I think it's something we should absolutely consider.
Right. I mean, it took me a little bit to get on board with it, to be honest.
I know. Traditional athletics usually have the toughest time. Everybody else gets on board, but the traditional athletics are like, it's not really a sport. But then when you really get into it, you realize how truly competitive it is.
Very big. It's almost as big as pickleball.
Mm-hmm.
This pickleball is, is a craze, right?
And I love pickleball.
In regards to what you're saying, um, the survey, I also wonder about exposure. When we think about lacrosse, tennis, those aren't sports, from my experience growing up, that I was very much exposed to. Until I was in spaces, that that was an exposure.
Right.
So, um, I know like in Boston, I know to your point, grants, there's like tenacity, I think it's called, where it's like, they come in. I know you said spaces an issue, so that's what I keep thinking.
Tennis?
No, when you just said spaces an issue in general, right, for the middle school students. So I just think like these grants and stuff are great, especially for exposure. Sometimes they donate, um, materials.
We have a tennis grant right now that donated, I, I have, um, tennis material in every elementary school. They provided us with, um, the, uh, TSA gave us a lot of equipment, cause I think they're worried about pickleball a little bit. So, um, they wanna get kids involved with tennis. They supplied us with, um, nets, uh, rackets, uh, practice balls, you name it. They, each phys ed teacher has it. Uh, so we started teaching tennis at the, at the elementary levels and middle school levels, um, to get them interested. Because, um, and Mike taught phys ed, you go through the winter, it's, it, it, it becomes a long, long time staying in the gym. So we're constantly looking for, um, different ways to entertain the kids and, and introduce different things. I'm working with, um, uh, Paul at DW for the fir-, with the first T as well. And also, uh, getting our special ed population involved with the first T as well. Um, so I truly believe in branching out as, as much as we can, because you're right. Uh, a lot of our kids are not introduced to these things, um, the same ways we were, um, when we were younger. I mean, we just played anything that was in season, you know?
And there's bias among sports, unfortunately, like.
Is there?
One of my biggest regrets is never playing soccer. Because I associated soccer with certain cultures. And then it's so, it was so ignorant because such an international sport.
It is, but they can't ever score goals. I'll never understand it. The goal's ninety feet wide, no one scores.
Yeah, well, you get your cardio for sure, so.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions? Members? No? Baseball. How long has that been out of play in middle school? And then also, what are we doing to introduce it to grow? Cause we do offer it at the high school.
Right. I think it's two thousand fifteen. And, um, to be honest, we, we got rid of it, cause it was at the point where I was gonna need like an ambulance at every field. Because of how bad it was, um, oh, we mentioned one of the school, well, actually there was two schools that never even made it out of the second inning the whole entire year, so. Um, and that was two thousand fifteen, I believe, fifteen?
It was fifteen.
Um, I, I do a survey every year.
Happening when all the, as you meant, when I was a kid, you, you, every side of the city had a little league. Some had two. You had a North Little League, Brookfield had their own little league. East Side had two. We had East Side Improvement, where I played at Downey. So you had, I don't know, twelve little leagues going? I think it's down to two, two? I mean, so it's kind of.
Yeah, it's just not fast. I mean, I played it, um, went to school for it and it's boring. You know, um, it is. I mean, I love it, but these kids are used to these fast paced things. And when it's, it's slow and methodical, they, they're not interested.
Yeah, kids don't wanna stand in right field anymore. The off chance you're gonna get a ball hit to you maybe once a game.
Cause I'm looking at it as if we're not engaging or trying to grow it in our middle school, then eventually it's gonna die out.
Yeah.
In the high school, so.
Yeah, we've had a couple of years.
Kinda crazy to me.
Right.
Not having that sport.
It really is, uh, you know.
Do it just at Fenway.
Uh, it's, it's, you know, when I tried out, uh, Favasi Baseball Brockton High, there was like a hundred and sixty kids trying out, you know? Um, I, well, I do a survey every single year. Um, I can, I can just speak on what, um, those surveys read. And there's usually very, very low interest in, in baseball.
And that's frustrating.
Yes.
Cause you got Nick and Kevin who both played minor league.
Paid for my education, yeah. So I, I mean, if there was, if there was a, you know, every once in a while, there's a, there's a, a group that comes through. Um, I think the most logical thing to do, um, if I was making the decisions is you, you, you begin to look at what we talked about last year is maybe having one team citywide, um, that feeds the high school. You know, um, I'm beginning to work with ADs, uh, from outside of Brockton. I'm working with Randolph, I'm working with Holbrook, West Bridgewater. Um, so we're gonna be playing them in basketball a little bit. So it's something that we could branch out to other, other middle school programs as well. You know, cause ultimately you, you're looking to get kids involved, but ultimately it's a feeder for the high school. And that, and that's, you know, how it's supposed to be set up. And I do, I think the days of having seven baseball teams at middle school level are over. But I do think we, it, it could be a way to have one that travels around. And keeps those kids together until they get to the high school. And again, if, if I do a survey and the numbers go up in baseball, that's something we can look at. Cause we could easily do track and baseball without a problem.
Mrs. Ellis?
Sorry, um, just for, to keep it in context and I'll use my age, not yours. When I played sports in high school, there weren't as many sports offerings. So I guess my question is, when you played baseball, think about back then, what the choices were for, for availability, options for sports. And now as we've grown and evolved, we're diluting like the four thousand students that we've had, or we're looking at, at the high school. Like we're, you know, and globally for the whole district, but we have so much more to offer right now.
Even, I, I went to West. Uh, we had soccer, basketball and baseball. That was it.
Those were the three that were offered?
Yep. Uh, football, but that wasn't run by the school department, right?
No, midgets ran it.
So, uh.
I just feel like the interest, obviously, the interest level isn't there comparatively to the other offerings.
Definitely, yeah.
Like if you said to a kid right now, would you rather play on a baseball team and try to be a baseball star? Or I'm gonna put you in a chair and you're gonna play in esports?
Oh, easily. I know the answer to that.
And so I understand totally where Tony's coming from and we're thinking, you know, we don't want it to die out. But it may be a foregone conclusion in a way. And then I don't wanna wait too much time before we ramp up in the area that is trending and is popular.
Right.
And it's a tough balance to decide to say, okay, we're gonna put our resources in this direction versus this direction. And so, I don't know, I just wanted to kind of.
Well, cause originally I thought that this was a Brockton problem, um, with kids not. But it's, the surrounding towns are having trouble.
Yeah.
Fielding teams too, uh, baseball and softball.
Yep.
Um, and I, I do think it's esports and different interests that have taken over.
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to sit here and, and say, we can't do baseball because, right?
Hundred percent agreed.
But that's where we're at.
And then we just have to, again, we just have to decide where we put the resources. And so instead of trying to fit a square peg in a round hole by forcing it and trying to make baseball to still work. I just, I think that we have to be careful of doing that, that's all.
Yeah, and I mean, things may change. We, we, you know, our numbers went down big time after the pandemic. And now they seem to be climbing back up again, so that's a good sign. Again, if we could just figure out the, the physicals, that would be, that would be ideal for me.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No further questions. Thank you.
All right.
Look forward for an update later on. Thanks for having Mr. Campbell come up and give us an update on the community school side.
Take your mic off.
Hi, I'm Matt Campbell. I'm the coordinator of recreation programs for the community schools. I had a list of things I was gonna talk about, but I think I'm gonna answer some of your questions you've asked. Try and fill in a couple blanks. Community Schools partners with Brockton Baseball, which is one of the little leagues in town. We had eighty kids playing, uh, fall baseball this year. They were, if I look at my numbers, give me one second, there were fifty-one, uh, great, uh, ages eight through twelve. And another thirty grades thirteen through, uh, ages thirteen through sixteen. So we do have some baseball offerings. We also partner with them for fall and summer league baseball as well. So there are kids that do play baseball in the city. A couple of years ago, when I first got this job, Mr. Thomas brought me down, brought me downstairs and asked about whether we could run middle school baseball, some sort of travel baseball team. And I think you'll find out what the prob-, the problem you'll have is other towns don't offer it. Other towns do not run ba-, no, there is a league down on the south coast. It does stretch as far as Bridgewater. It's been in existence for probably fifty or sixty years. And I, they do have a, a school run baseball league. They're not taking new members. We looked at it for baseball and softball. So I think one of the things we run into for baseball is it's not a sport that is offered in other towns. So if we can't have, uh, baseball at the seven middle schools, there's, there's a lack of games. So what we've done instead is gone, uh, partnered up with one of the little leagues and that stretches all the way to Babe Ruth. That's three seasons of baseball. That's fall baseball. There's a couple hundred people that play for us in the spring. And, uh, probably about sixty to seventy. It's pretty much the same as fall and the summer. Think earlier you asked about, uh, four-year-olds. We don't have a lot of four-year-old options, unfortunately. Uh, Brockton Track Club is available. They work pretty closely with us. Uh, and that's a spring, that's a summer program really, get going, I think the first week of May. And they'll take, we'll take kids for three, you know, depending on the age. Uh, that's twice a week and till Ju-, till the end of school, and then it's once a week in the summer. Uh, as soon as, uh, you get to five, we have quite a few offerings. Uh, we have a, we have youth aquatics, which we had twenty-five kids in youth aquatics. That starts at grade five, which I'm guess, I'm guess age five is probably kindergarten.
Yep.
Uh, we have kindergarten basketball, uh, through BCB. Uh, that's the clinic that the George School, it's going on Saturdays right now. We are still, for anybody watching at home, we are still taking people. There's plenty of spots available. Uh, and that's run by Jake Hackett, uh, was a teacher at the Kennedy School. And, uh, he, he kind of oversees, oversees that section of our youth clinic. So we have options for five, uh.
That's a great clinic too. That's been, that's been great for years.
Uh, baseball, you can sign up for baseball, uh, you know, in kindergarten. We'll get you playing T-ball out there. Couple other things we have going on in the fall. Uh, we have a very successful youth wrestling program. Uh, the Brockton wrestling, wrestling coaches, the Sean Fenstris, Mark Mendes, they run it. Uh, we have forty kids play, uh, youth wrestling at the Downey. Uh, school system purchased wrestling mats. They take one of the gym at the Downey, they store them there. We have forty kids in that and there'll be another forty coming in in the winter. We have middle school football. We had a hundred and sixty-four kids our first year. We went over a hundred and eighty at one point, usually the first week of October is when everyone's still playing. We had about a hundred and eighty kids playing. Uh, we have four teams and we do play teams outside the city. We had a championship game, Mr. Cairo, uh, we're very close with Mr. Cairo and, uh, Mr. Lee for field space, cause I think one thing you've heard everyone say is we don't have a lot of space. And even more importantly than space, we don't have any lights. So as soon as, you know, you get to play sports in October, five o'clock, it's dark. So it's very difficult for us to make games up when things rain. We do have the championship game every year at Maciano Stadium, the two years the league's existence goes very well. Eastern Pluff won it in year one, West in a rematch, West was, West beat them this year. Going through, we're, in the wintertime right now, obviously we have wrestling going on. We have two, we have a bunch of different basketball programs, uh, BCB basketball, which I think, Mr. Thomas, you were the founder of?
No, it was, um.
We're pretty close to it.
It was run, I was the first one to do it for the school.
It was the Hancock League.
It was the Hancock League that was run by Bill McGarley, who actually did it. And I took it from, then it came into community schools and I ran it for, I don't know, ten years.
Three hundred or so kids, few more than that playing, uh, grades K through eight. Uh, we also have travel basketball, which is run by, uh, Kenny Montero, who runs the friends and mentors program that works in the school system. About seventy to eighty kids playing travel basketball and there, there is a difference. It's a little bit more money, it's, it's more travel involved. It's, that's named travel basketball. Uh, and it's pretty high level. Teams typically do pretty well. We have grades four, four through eight in that. Kind of excited about this and we're just kind of putting the, the finishing touches on this, this week. After the break with, uh, some people in the community, uh, John Forth, who's a local referee, uh, is kind of piloting this. We're gonna be doing a girls' basketball clinic on Monday nights at West Middle School. Very excited about that. John has some shooting machines and he's got daughters in the schools, he's got a daughter in the school system who plays BCB. in the school system who plays BCB. You know, and he's, he was a point guard at Brockton High. I think he's, you know, probably graduated in the late 90s, thereabout. So he's gonna, he's volunteering his time, totally free clinic, trying to draw more girls into playing basketball. Think that pretty much covers what we were, we're doing sports wise. We were able to partner with, we got, I was approached by Willie Wilson, who was, you know, sort of my mentor when I came, one of my mentors when I came to the school system. Willie was the former history department head at Brockton High. He was a track athlete at Brockton, Brockton High in the early 70s. And he's retired, he's BC grad, I think he's a double Eagle actually, I think he did his masters there as well. And we've just had four of our football players last weekend in Rene Haywood's office redoing the Lou Montgomery documentary, the BC. Lou Montgomery, for anyone that doesn't know, is probably the most undersold Brockton athlete of all time. I mean, he just doesn't get enough attention. He was the first black athlete at Boston College, star running back from the city of Brockton. The city of Brockton actually raised, he got a partial scholarship at BC. This is the 1930s. The city of Brockton paid, raised money and paid for his college education. He went to Boston College and he was denied the chance to play versus teams from down south. He couldn't travel to the Cotton Bowl versus Clemson, the Sugar Bowl at one point. And his career was kind of derailed by, you know, the segregationist South and the people we met with and some of our kids were taking part in the video. Really proud, really, the kids did a great job. They were very good at, you know, explaining how it kind of relates to, you know, sports in Brockton now. So you can look for that coming out. I think the people from BC said in March or February, late February. So I think that'll be kind of a treat for everyone to get to see.
Any questions from Mrs. Ellis?
How many athletes, what's your population total in community schools for athletes? Like how many athletes are we servicing?
I have no idea. Be perfectly honest, I'd be guessing a lot of people do more than one sport.
Okay, so not unduplicated.
It's, it's very difficult. It's easily over 500 kids.
Okay.
600 kids. I'd be hazardting a guess, I don't know how many. We have such a huge age range, so many different programs. I've never thought to go through and check them off, how many different individual kids. There's a lot of people, when you sign up for a community schools program, you, you create an account on, on the website and it's very common to see, you know, you signed up for BCB basketball for eight straight years. You might also sign up for aquatics. You might all, at a different time of the year. It has all your, the summer programs like Get Ready and stuff. So I don't honestly know how many people.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Holmes?
Is the, is the swimming facility, is it still operating right now in the winter season? And I know, I forgot to bring that up during the, when Mr. Carroll was visiting with us too.
I know we were having some trouble with the heater in the pool a few weeks ago, last I checked. Swimming, I know, we have adult swimming as well, so I know that's going on. I've seen people going in and out of the pool. Swimming, sort of the, the flow of swimming in terms of, you know, people signing up, the adult is pretty consistent. It's a pretty stable group of people. I think the same lady has been running it for many years. Youth swimming tends to do very well with younger kids as they get older. You know, that's, you're running into basketball, you're running into soccer, you're running into other sports.
Okay.
Any other questions? Can you just touch upon middle school football as far as the communities that we play and what you do as far as getting the kids ready for the, for the sport?
So we have, we have four teams. West kind of has the most kids, so they, so they're a team by themselves. East and Pluff are together, Davis and South are together and Asheville and North are together. Very fortunate this year, we, first year was hard. We have busing, we were busing the kids from practice. So kids get on a bus to Asheville, they go to North for practice. Davis goes to South, Pluff goes to East. And about a week into the season, the buses went away. We all know about the busing problems we had last year. None of that occurred this year and I think Nick spoke to that earlier. It's wonderful. So would that really help get it, get the kids back and forth to practice? Having our own buses is just so key and then it really makes it easier because we have two very large teams. West has 50-something kids. So they were able to operate both an A, an A-team and a B-team. So if you didn't play on the Wednesday night A-team, and they had seven games this year, we had to cancel one because of rain, field conditions. They had three or four B-games. East and Pluff, same idea. East and Pluff actually touched over 70 at one point this year. And football is a thing where kids try it, they try it for three weeks, kids come late, kids join, so it's sort of a rolling number. But at one point, East and Pluff had probably 65 or 70 kids and they played three or four B-games as well. Our schedule, A and B games, we played teams, I could do this off the top of my head, Randolph, Mashpee, Holbrook, Martha's Vineyard came, came up here four times. Nantucket came up here twice. We, we sent teams to Redding, Woburn, Weston, and Weston came to Brockton as well. Redding, Woburn, Wilmington, Melrose at one point, and I think Winchester. So we've had quite a, you know, the league is run by a gentleman, Paul Mangano, who is, and he runs an engineering business up in Wilmington. And he's, he's the president of the league and he's, he puts together the schedule and it's, it's been great. We're hoping to add a couple teams into the league in the southern section. It's a little bit more spread out than the north, so there's a little bit more travel. I mean, we do send teams down to Mashpee. Mashpee comes here three or four times. Again, the biggest problem we have is fields. We had to, we had one week this year where it rained, it poured and East Junior High floods and North becomes. North, North becomes a cranberry bog. West drains pretty well, but it's, you know, as the light, we were able to light up the field at West this year. We get facilities was able to get us some portable lights, that was cool, we played Holbrook there. But West is, West drives pretty well, but it's also, it was the sun glint, the sun glints over thornyly and you have the gently rolling hills because there's nothing flat about that. And it's, so it's not ideal. We get in, Mr. Kero gets us into the stadium every chance we get and the kids love that and teams love to come in here and play Mariano Stadium. So field space is an issue. We keep all the equipment and school system's been very generous with the equipment. That's in the, that's in the basement at West Middle School. So we bus all the kids, all four teams come over. We fit them for helmets, shoulder pads right in the gym. They start the same time as the high school season. They end about three weeks before the high school season ends. We have a summer program. Aaron Montero kind of was a phys ed teacher. He's also the North and Asheville coach. He's a phys ed teacher at Brockton High. He sort of oversees our strength and conditioning in the summers. We have somewhere between 20 and 30 kids, three or four times a week do that. It's free, kids, kids come, they get a lunch, they work out, throw the ball around. Will Wells, who's the coach at West, had about 10, 15 to 20 kids. We did a youth strength and conditioning a couple times a week last spring. That was pretty successful. Will's actually kind of put together a little weight room in the locker room at West. So he's got, that's part of his mentoring program he runs at West. So he's got the whole football team working out at West on Monday afternoons, which is pretty cool. Like, like the, like the kids to be strong.
I know we're speaking about football, but is there any mentoring programs as far as, I know Nick, middle school and community schools, you know, partnering up a student, you know, one of the middle school kids with a, a kid at the high school with different sports or?
I was looking at a program, one of the top program, high school programs in the state of New York is Somers High School. Couldn't even begin to tell you where it was. I was listening to a podcast and I heard the coach and it's very sim, it's similar dynamic to Brockton. They had a coach who was there for 40 years. His son recently took over. They run a mentoring program that we, we've looked at, we haven't implemented yet. I'm still trying to get details. I emailed both the coach, the old coach and then his son, who's now the coach and having her back. They partner their juniors, if I'm not mistaken, their incoming juniors with an incoming freshman. So when the kid gets to the high school, he kind of knows someone, kind of, you know, there's a lot, we do a lot with mentoring with adults, talking to kids. I think there's definitely room for growth with our upperclassmen talking to our younger classmen. But as of yet, we have not implemented that.
I know the band has a curriculum where it's like embedded into their schedule at the high school. How does that work with our athletes? Is it the band or? It, it doesn't? There's no set curriculum that?
We don't, athletics right now is strictly extracurricular.
That's across the board?
Mm-hmm.
So there's no curriculum out there that's?
There's, there's in a lot, there's a couple places in Massachusetts that use phys ed for strength and conditioning with their athletes so kids can play more sports after school. So you have, you have, we have an enormous amount of kids at the high school. I think Mr. Kero and Nick are both aware of this, that play two and three sports. They don't get to work out, you know. A lot of kids in this state play one sport, they maybe fiddle or dabble with another. Our kids are great. Our kids take every sport they play very seriously. They don't get to work out the way other kids do. You know, they have responsibilities. We have, you know, I was in the weight room today with a young man. He goes home, he's got to get his, he, he gets his brother off the bus a couple of times a week. You know, he's, you know, we have to understand that, you know, he's, why he, his mother will help him out during football. It's hard for him to do another sport and work out and he has a 3-0 GPA. So he's a good student, he's a good kid. As of right now, we don't have that. A lot of places do.
So it's basically left up to the coaching staff to put a, like a strength and conditioning program?
Yeah, the coaches handle it all. I mean, we work, you know, TB-12 has come in, it's helped a lot, especially in the, in the summer and in the, in the winter and the spring in terms of football, which is obviously what I'm most familiar with. I know that they're in the fall for track and, you know, soccer. And that's helped a lot. The kids like that, you know, it's, it's TB-12. You know, people try and work together. Like I had the baseball team today. I'm not the baseball coach, but you know, Coach Brennan's the baseball coach, he's a friend of mine. I had the weight room open today. I had the workout for the baseball team that he put together. There's going to be days where, you know, we have the basketball kids in there because, you know, they have some time before practice. But yes, it's up to the coaching staff to sort of put together the strength and conditioning on days where TB-12 is not available.
I know when I went to West, we had a little, a little gym with weights. Is that in every middle school? I'm assuming they all have a little weight room? Or is that just?
Every middle school has a little space, yeah.
A little space, so there's nothing?
Enough.
Enough.
Nothing, yeah, just enough. Most of the time you roll out that, that equipment into the gym itself per unit.
Okay.
North has a pretty good space.
Yeah, I mean, we did.
North has a big space.
We did a lock of Lamova.
Yeah, when we had that CrossFit grant.
We had a grant, we actually took out a lot of unused lockers and crap and turned that into.
Mr. Wells just sort of conquered the locker room at West and put up the, you know, he's got the old lap pull-down machine from the high school.
We took a lot of lockers out of there.
Some of the CrossFit stuff, all the lockers that were in there. So it doubles as the football locker room in the fall and then he can go in there with some of the kids and do some pretty good weightlifting with them a couple times a week. But, you know, it's, you know, I said this the last time we met, we have old buildings, we have old facilities. And I think every, I think, you know, speaking just from an athletic standpoint, I, I think Kevin and Nick would agree with this, is there's a lot of stuff we'd like to do. We are hampered by space.
Thank God we took the locker, what, what part of the locker room do we take to make the weight room double? Because that was a huge problem for years.
At the high school?
Yeah.
Took the, the wrestling side and moved, took a piece of the girls' locker room out and put the wrestling mat in there. That's great.
Would that double the space almost, right?
The weight room at the high school and the wrestling room, in the wrestling room, that kind of grew out of the old girls' locker room are the two best facilities we have in the entire school system. They're new, they're beautiful, they're state of the art and they're, and they're as good as any public school you're going to see in the state. And then we did that during COVID, if I'm not.
Yeah, Mason's did most of the.
I mean, it's, they are, it's an impressive, impressive facility. And there's enough stuff in there for, you know, every sports team for, you know. It's, it's, it's the best thing we have in the school system. Other than the actual stadium itself because of its size, I mean, it's probably the biggest draw we have.
And there's a, in, in, as we're looking now at a new bus depot, we're also looking at space that would house, where outside grounds works out of. Outside grounds now takes a pretty good portion of the field house at the high school where the locker rooms are. If you look, it's the first part of that building that's closest to the entrance by the rolling gate. So our goal is, once the city purchases us a bus depot, that we would move them to that location and then athletics would take the rest, that whole section that outside grounds uses now, would open up that whole space for the athletics.
We don't have, and this is sort of unrelated, but we just, we don't have a lot of storage for anything.
No.
I mean, we found, I mean.
The high school is the worst storage.
It's just.
Always, it's never had, they never built it for storage, ever.
I have equipment all over the city.
No, we found every nook and cranny.
Everywhere.
Boiler room at Central.
Oh, yeah.
Got an unused closet in the basement that hides all the BBC basket, the Brock, the BCB basketball stuff. We have a storage container outside that has all the freshman football equipment, the lacrosse equipment from West Middle School when they had a team eight, nine years ago plus all random odds and ends. There's another storage container that's half store, half softball, half Brockton, half to die.
Why we have so many of those ugly storage containers? We just don't have space in the, when they build schools, they just don't.
I brought pallets down into the basement of West because it gets water and that's where all the middle school football equipment is, is. It's all up on pallets so it doesn't get soaked and doesn't get covered in mold. And it's, it was pretty much the only unused, and I don't think a lot of people knew it existed because it was.
Oh, and they placed down there, I remember they have it out there.
The, the old bookroom.
Yeah.
Which was.
Actually, a bunch of voting ballots got ruined in the flood, the great floods of.
That's the other side.
2012 or whatever.
Mr. Jerome went down there in 2011 or 2012 and came back up and ordered a hazmat team and go and remove everything. I lost all my national, because there's two sides, all the middle schools have basements. At West, probably, I don't even think, Nick, you went to West.
I didn't know what was there.
Me either.
There were classrooms down there.
When you said that you stored stuff down there, I didn't know it existed.
Me either until, I went with John that time after the flood.
I went, that was the bookroom when I started teaching there. So that was, there were books from teachers from the 1950s down there. I found a scrapbook from West down there from the year the school opened. I gave it to someone, I have no, I wish I had it back because it was pretty cool to look at, but.
Put everything down, they have to be on pallets.
Everything is, it just gets wet. But it's the biggest room in the school system not being used and I, I sort of laid claim to it. I just kind of started putting stuff. I just kind of started putting stuff in it and didn't leave.
On the.
I was too scared to go down there.
Oh, it's awful. I brought Mr. Kenny down there today.
Quite the place.
I was a little worried about coming down there.
Something like you're seeing in a horror movie.
It's, it's, it's not a nice place.
No.
I know, I mean, I should ask this when Kevin was up here. So we don't have a full-time strength and conditioning coach? So it's fair to say that, that's something that we should explore, um, to work with all of our athletes?
Yeah, we would have to, and then you could use the person, um, during, like you could schedule a class and get more kids out of studies. And give, like you can give preference to students and you could have a class. You'd have to, you know, you'd have to, he'd be a regular scheduled teacher. Uh, but you would have to do it so kids would schedule it, so they have it, um, and make it part of an elective. Yes.
We'll work on that. Any other questions from any of the other members? Thank you, Matt, for your time.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for all the, uh, the department heads here making their presentation, um, for music, arts, athletics. We see there's a grave need with our facilities and Kevin and Mike. I mean, I've seen, um, the work that's been worked on with our fields. Can't wait till January when everything is drafted up and we can go in front of the council and propose it. And it's not just for the, uh, for the students, but it's also for the community. Uh, it's a big investment in our infrastructure and, uh, we can move this forward.
Turn away a lot of adult, um, who should have access to obviously playing activities in the city. So unfortunately, the only turf field is the high school. We have to turn away a lot of adult soccer, uh, football. We do our best to fit everybody in, but we can't accommodate everybody on one field. Cause their sports are the same as the high school sports. So you fit them in late at night, you fit them in on Sundays. It's just, um, it's, and it's again, like Tony said, it's, it's not just for the students, it's for the entire community.
Thank you. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by, by Kathy, probably second by Jared. Show of hands. Meeting adjourned.